Monday, July twenty first at six P M. Crosby, could you do roll call, please?
Jason is excused. Mike?
Here.
Jake?
Here.
Jim?
Here.
Dale?
Here.
Eric is excused. Carolyn?
Here.
Craig?
Here.
Crosby here.
This is an open meeting and has been posted. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. All right. Up first, we'll do a donation recognition, uh, recognition.
Yep. We'd like to thank Theresa Hennessy, owner of Fork in the Road, for graciously donating thirty-six hundred dollars to the Summer Buddies Program. So, this is a remarkable donation. They do some fundraising for us, and this in turn provides opportunities for our high school kids, students with disabilities.
Plus their, their walleye, their walleye's pretty good. Pecan crusted, I think.
I have never had a bad meal at the Fork in the Road.
All right. Thank you, Fork in the Road. Citizens comments? We do not have any. We're gonna move on down to presentations, and we're just gonna move around. We're gonna have the Parkview Middle School Project update. We're gonna move that up first.
Thank you. Clint, Maria, Kurt, if you guys wanna come up. We also have Sean Cullen from J P Cullen and Sons in the audience tonight. This is the team that's helping us design and get this middle school built.
Gotta turn green.
There we go. You wanna test yours, Maria?
Testing.
All right. Well, great. Kurt Weebelhaus, owners rep for the school district. Exciting, it's an exciting meeting today. It's able, we're going to be showing the pretty pictures, the video kind of virtual tour. Take the last six, seven months of, of design, and we can kinda actually see what, what the images that will represent the, the future building. So, before we get into that, and I'll have Clint and Maria from Bray walk us through that, but before we get into that, I just wanna talk through kinda what to expect coming up. We are approaching our first bid pack, Bid Pack One, that will go out to bid in August. And Bid Pack One is our site work, our footings and foundations, so a portion of the work that will allow us to get started excavating and getting our footings and foundations in. Bid Pack Two will be in November. That'll be sent, and that'll be the rest of the project that'll get bid out. So, one of the pieces that I asked J P Cullen to provide us was a list of all the bidders that they plan on inviting. And so we'll circulate that to the board and along, along with the administration team that's working on the project as well. And the purpose for that is really to look at those bidders to make sure we're capturing all the local participation that we want. And if there's somebody in the, in, on that list that we don't wanna spend an invite to because maybe we've had problems with them. It's open bid, so anybody can bid on it. One of the things that J P Cullen does do is they do a pre-qualification to make sure that the companies that are bidding are financially stable and can perform on the project. But the purpose of sending that out ahead of time is just to make sure that we're capturing everybody. So, if you see somebody missing on that list, when, when Dr. Cook sends it out to you, just respond back to him and let him know. So we're capturing everybody on the invite. So, that'll be getting sent out. And then, when bids come back for Bid Pack One, we will compare what the budget is for that portion of work against what the bids came back in. Assuming everything is good, we'll keep the green light and keep going with awarding those contracts. When Bid Pack Two gets bid out, I'll come back then with a financial snapshot to show exactly where the dollars and cents are. Obviously, it's not an option to go over budget, so, but we'll provide a little more of a detailed summary after Bid Pack Two comes out to show where the overall project comes in. So, if there's no questions on that, I'll turn it over to Clint and Maria.
Well, thank you very much. Again, tonight, we're gonna show some moving pictures of the building and some walkthroughs. We just wanted to start out and kinda recap on what we've shared to date. This was a few months ago, I believe, but we did share an update to the board with a site plan for the facility. Again, there's been some minor change tweaks and alterations to this, but really the overall content, concept and, and idea for the site has, has remained the same. And then we did share a number of, again, exterior images of the building, so that's the, the little black triangles that kinda pop up. So, again, the intent of that was to kind of walk you around the building and see the different aspects of the building. So we'll kinda quickly flip through those slides just as a little bit of a recollection, and then we will transition to our animation. This one is at the, at the corner, so kind of the, the marquee view of the building for most people as they're traveling through Maguano. This view doesn't show up in, in the, in the walk around the building, but again, we did provide this earlier. Just wanted to note that while the building does say Parkview, we, this was, this was generated before the naming situation was discussed. So, I think some of the later images will have it updated to just generically say middle school at this point. This is the, kind of the front main of the section of the building with the cafeteria on the right, and then our main entry and three-story academic on the left. This is that three-story academic with the entrance to the right, and then the, the library space is, is up above. We're hoping it'll look as attractive at night as it does during the day. This would be the three-story academic side of the building. Again, really important, we have a natural light in all the learning spaces for, for the students and staff. And then this would be the, kind of the back or south side of the building with what we're calling the event entrance, kind of in the middle. The academic is on the right, and then the, probably the, the biggest mass is the, the music department there on the left. This is, again, that event entry. And then this is the section of the building that is existing, that will be rehabbed and renovated primarily for, for tech ed. We'll get a really good look of this, at this during the, kind of the walk around of the building. Here's what's currently the inside courtyard space. You see the, the art classrooms there, and again, the, the section that pops up up above will be the new cafeteria space. And then finally, again, this is a, a section of the existing building. This would be an area where, where that van is parked. That would be all-new brick. So, again, we're hoping to find a really good match to the existing brick, which then again will get implemented kinda throughout the entire facility, including usage in the new building as well. So with that, we'll kinda give a, a spin around the building, again, starting at the, the north side, the, the new main entry. So again, the, kind of the, where the, some of the people are shown there, that would be the entry with the library up above. And then as we pan around, the, the lower section of this will be our office space. The upper section, the second story section, is some, some of the classroom spaces that will exist. I think that's foreign language, correct, Maria?
Correct. This walkthrough will also give you a better expectation of what you can see through to the interior than the renderings we just saw. So you will see a little bit more color and texture through the glass into the interior spaces as opposed to the still images, which I think adds a lot of life and realism for what you can expect when the building is complete.
So, just passing by the cafeteria, and then again, our transition to the existing building. This section of brick will be kind of rehabbed, existing section. This is part of the existing part of that, that is exterior. As we turn the corner, again, where the, the van is parked, that would be all-new brick. So, again, a combination of cleaning up the existing brick and then the opportunity for, for new brick cladding on the building. And then as you see, the, the, the glass pieces that, that jut out, that is the existing art rooms. So, we will be replacing the, the glass sections of those. And then again, that brick in that immediate area is existing brick that we're looking to get cleaned up and, and taken care of. This section, again, we're kind of in the current courtyard, which will be opened and exposed, so the, the windows will be replaced. And then the darker material that you see there, again, is utilized on the new buildings. So it's a great opportunity to, again, bring those, those materials together and create a nice cohesive building. This-
Bear with us with some of the lighting conditions. Some of this is rendering a little bit darker than it would be in actuality while the light is kind of washing out some of the brick. So always be sure that when we provide kind of that exterior sample board, that you're referencing those for a true representation.
You saw a couple of the buses to the left there. In that parking area is the, the bus drop-off loop on the west side of the facility. And then again, making our way on the, the last leg of the existing building that we'll see as we walk around here. And then transitioning into family consumer ed is kind of in the area that, that juts in there. That's new construction, and then our, the next tall box is, is our band choir and music department spaces. Yeah, to Maria's point, we, we had to be a little bit creative with the lighting of this as we were doing it 'cause obviously if, if you render it from the perspective of the sun angle on one side of the building, it'll look very, very dark on the other. So we kinda creatively shifted where the light was coming from as we rotated around the building. If you have any questions as we go through, we can, we can pause it. Otherwise, you know, we can, we can obviously rewind if there's any areas you'd like to go back to. Uh, the gym, no, the gymnasium is actually kind of internal, so right there would be the fitness room to the left. And then that's the kind of event entrance in the middle. So that's kind of a, a circulation spine through the middle of the building. The gym, as you go in there, is, is to the left. So when we do the walkthrough, you, you'll have a pretty good sense of where the gym is located.
And this is a good example of where I was kind of illustrating that idea of seeing the color through. So you're seeing that that fitness center is a double-height space where we're using that really bold use of the Maguano blue and yellow to activate that, which you'll see on our interior walkthrough as well.
And then our three-story wing. So again, the, that lower tan brick is, is gonna be very similar to the existing building. And again, the attempt to really tie both existing and new together. Yep, here's probably the most dramatic where the, we can see the, the lighting changing.
It's supposed to be dramatic as we turn the corner. And where you're seeing that gray panel in that center section, then, it's not illustrated completely here, but it, it does have quite a bit of texture, sort of vertical grooves to it, which is better illustrated in the stills. So just kinda wanna highlight that, that loss of texture here. That would be part of the design. These zones here.
And then we'll be ending as we round the corner here with a, a nice look of the building at nighttime, so. So any questions about the exterior? Although we, we can obviously jump back if anything comes to mind after, after we go through. But we can certainly rewind if there was any questions or areas you'd like to go back to and have any questions about. All right. So our next exercise is we're gonna kinda start at, again, at that front door. I think Maria's, has a, a nice floor plan that sorta shows the path we go through the building. But basically, we're gonna kinda weave through more or less all of the different areas of the building. Not every single room, obviously, but to kinda give you a general flavor for the overall building. So, on the floor plan here, this is our, again, our proposed floor plan. And then as the next slide kinda shows, oh, and then our, our second and third floor.
So to Clint's point, not a lot of wholesale changes, really, if any. If you were to go back to the board presentation from April, the, the biggest thing you'll see is layering in more detail and refinement into the plan.
And then again, our, our route is we'll come into the building, go through the office, the gym, through the academic wing. Kinda go up to the second floor, library, walk along the side of the gym with where those classrooms are, and then come back down. Go through the cafeteria into the existing building, through wrestling, through C T E, through that, I always call it home ec., but career and tech, uh, family and consumer ed, into a music space, and then finish up at the, the fitness and, and then walking out the event entrance. So again, walking in the, the north entry here, to the left is student services, and then we're gonna walk in- And then we're going to walk in to the right where our school office is within the building. Really did our best to render all of the materials as close as we possibly can. But again, actually seeing the materials is kind of the best way. This is that spine that then runs from the front door to that event, back out to that event commons. Stepping into the gym, at the far end of this gym is a railing. When we go up to the second floor, we'll kind of peek down from that railing. That's kind of a walking jogging track that does go around the gymnasium. You can see the bleachers and our competition court. We're kind of at center court right now. And then we'll turn and walk back out through what will be operable doors, very similar to what we have at the high school, so that during events, those can be open and have nice flow of people in and out into this kind of event common space here.
So then we'll transition into more of the core academic neighborhoods as we've been terming them. And so you're going to pass through the locker alcove, which students can access their locker into the collaboration space. You can imagine all of these classrooms opening up onto this space for a sort of 21st century learning environments for these students. Also seeing what we call small group instruction rooms through this glass here. There's two of those for every core academic neighborhood, and that's meant for small groups, whether that's teachers and students, just students or otherwise. As far as how this stitches back into the overall floor plan, there's two core academic neighborhoods or pods per floor, which would make up a grade level per floor. As we walk through this corridor here, you're seeing additional lockers on our right and then three science classrooms. We've illustrated the core academic neighborhoods in Mcwanago blue and gold. So you'll have one blue pod per floor and one yellow pod per floor. As we walk through this corridor and sort of experience those science classrooms, this is where those two colors come together, dissipate, and transition. And you can see that illustrated even to the toilet and restroom facility finishes as well.
The furniture right now is just in as placeholders, so it will be a little bit more colorful than just white.
Unless you really like the white, we can make that work too.
Are the lockers going to be the gray that was on there or different?
That is indicative of the color selection. And then that would have a solid surface material wrap for durability. So we're now exiting the yellow core academic neighborhood or pod, kind of moving back towards that common area. Integrating places of pause throughout all of the corridors for the project, recognizing that there is a lot of corridor to get you around this school. So whether that's benching, digital display, tackable surface, we've really started to integrate that into the plan. As we come up the main stair here, it brings us to the library and the library collaboration space. Arguably, the best view out will be from this library space here. And as you can see, it's a double-height space. Really pulling in the warmth, that was something that was critical to the district leadership team to weave into the project in addition to the Mcwanago blue and yellow. So finding opportunities to have that sort of timeless sophisticated feel, that 21st century learning environment feel for that library.
Blue and gold, right?
Blue and gold, yes.
I thought you said yellow.
Did I? But that brings up a good point. And so what you'll notice as we move into the gym again and kind of along these classrooms here, you have your true Mcwanago blue in those more high-impact athletic areas and the gold. The true gold is brought throughout the project because that is a really nice gold for learning environments. As the blue is concerned, we are bringing in a slightly deeper blue into spaces like the cafeteria, like the core academic spaces. And here in the gym here is where you're seeing that true punchy blue. This is that walking track that Clint was indicating before, that connected from the world language classrooms that we just walked by.
So the track is only seen from the gym on the two sides and then they're in a hallway on the other side?
Yeah, good question. So let me actually rewind a little bit. So it's a little bit hard to track, but the track, I did not mean for that pun. But you will be coming out of the library into that corridor with classrooms to our right, but that is serving as the track. When we get to the end of this hallway, the track then pivots into the gym. And so the track is truly within the gym box for the short side of the track. Everything else is kind of circulating around the gym.
But there are windows around a majority of it. You'll see it coming up here and then the other, the other short leg of the track that is not within the gym box also has windows in it. Part of that is just due to the bleachers. If we had that fully open, it does pose some problems with how the bleachers end up integrating within that. So kind of that choice to go about doing it this way was for efficiency of circulation and, you know, again maximizing kind of the space and then the anticipated usage for that track as well.
So it really wouldn't be usable for gym classes though? Because we wouldn't want students running the hallways?
Probably not running, but I would have, yeah, probably.
No, they currently use the outdoor track for more walking than running during gym class.
Okay. I'd rather it be outside anyways, but I also don't want a bunch of kids roaming the halls either.
We also thought this would be nice for parents when their kids are in practice, they can come there and move around a little bit, community members.
How many elevators are there?
There is one elevator in the building. Kind of positioned to serve the three-story section as well as the two-story section. I would say really the second floor portion of the building, second and third, it really is pretty consolidated on that eastern side of the building. So while the building, you know, it has a fairly large footprint as a whole, you know, the amount of accessibility via elevators is a pretty small portion of that.
And I would assume that the elevator is not some tiny little two-person thing, like we can get someone with a wheelchair and stuff through there no problem?
Yeah, the goal, yeah, the goal is to be a gurney size so that if a stretcher needs to be utilized, that they can fit that within there. So we just came down the stairs. We turned to the left. So behind us would be a corridor that would take us back past the offices and back to where we entered the building. And then this is our cafeteria space. And so to the left is a concessions area. You can see the overhead doors for the serving area straight ahead. And then now we're looking to the north out the windows. And then our multipurpose stage space to the left, or to the right there, I'm sorry. Again, this would be where the serving space would be for the students getting their food. And then as we pass through this section, we are back into the older section of the building or existing section of the building. Turning to the left, that is where the existing building is. We are putting the new tiles to tie into the look and feel of the rest of the facility. And then as we get up here to the right is our art classrooms. And we're going to go into the left here, which is the current cafeteria, which will get the floor infilled and will become the new wrestling and multipurpose space. So we're showing it kind of in the wrestling configuration here with the mats down. And then as we walk out, you'll see the kind of the flooring that will be in there if the mats are pulled up. The current stage will get filled in and is utilized as a storage space. So back out into the hallway and then we transition as we extend, or walk down to the south and then to the, to the west. This will be our career and technical education spaces. So again, fully renovated, we're pulling the lockers out of this space, so the hallways are nice and wide and allows for some opportunity to add some windows and be a little bit more flexible with different parts of the, of the design.
Sliding glass doors connecting some of these cleaner classrooms to the lab spaces.
Those funky yellow things floating in the space are where we'll have cord reels for electric power, kind of hanging from the ceiling. It won't, it won't look like that, so. That brick wall is actually an existing brick wall that we're going to kind of clean up and allow to be the finished wall in the, in the plan. So there's a couple of examples where we're adding windows to, again, add visibility and allow students to see the exciting things that are happening within those spaces. The Mcwanago CTE on the wall is kind of suggestive at this point, probably a nice opportunity to have, you know, something very impactful in the hallway from a graphics perspective. So again, people, just to improve the look and feel of the different space. So we'll transition here. We're kind of, again, passing through the last part of the existing building and then we'll be back in the new section to kind of wrap up with the music department and the family consumer ed.
Taking a lot of cues from the high school FCE classroom space and lab.
This flooring did not render very well, so it will not look like that either, so.
But that would be epoxy resin, so you can kind of imagine the fleck resin material. Throughout the corridors as you're seeing is stained concrete, so that'll be polished. And then we're utilizing stain to again, break up the corridors, add some visual interest. We're coming into the music suite now, and so we always make the joke, but these are not small animal cages. These are instrument cubbies, so providing some instrument storage outside of the classrooms to be a little bit more communal as well as instrument storage within the classrooms for those school-owned larger instruments. This is an example of how we're designing each of the music spaces for the purposes of today. We just brought forward the band space. Let me go back. So this is actually a specialty flooring. It's a resilient floor. That kind of looks like a fuzzy carpet, but it will kind of pool water, any liquids that would be sat on it. But it also helps with the acoustical properties. What's that?
Oh, saliva?
Correct. And so we've been working with Andy closely on, on this particular product. Lot of conversations as well about supervision into the practice and ensemble rooms. So making sure that we're providing kind of reasonable and appropriate interior windows to help with some of that while maintaining acoustic properties. We're still passing along music classrooms on our right, so this would be the general music classroom through this window here.
And the gym would be directly to our left.
And so here you're seeing a sort of hub for cubby spaces for athletics, for students to use to put their shoes, bags, what have you before gym class. And then we end our tour in the fitness center, which hopefully feels very similar design-wise to the gym. And hopefully you also noted as we looked at the gym that it does kind of hearken back to that, that high school design that we did for you all a few years ago while providing a new identity for the middle school. I should note too, another thing that we are sort of finalizing in our design is the potential use of existing bleacher boards. So that wood bleacher board, we're looking to find ways to integrate that into some of those benching elements that I highlighted before. And that's what you're seeing there. And then we'll end back in that common space at the athletic side of the facility.
Any questions or areas you'd like us to go, yes?
Yeah, I don't, sorry, go ahead. I don't remember on the gym part, are there open, are there windows in the gym area? And what I'm getting at is I remember the wrestling room, no windows, like for tornado shelter stuff. Do we have a space big enough with no windows that can accommodate the whole school going in there at one time?
Yeah, well, I mean, technically, the current cafeteria, the wrestling room would, would not have any windows. And I don't believe the gym has any exterior windows either. It's all internal. The windows that you see are out into various corridors. So whether it would technically qualify as a storm shelter, I mean, where we, it's not, you know, technically designed as a, kind of the strict definition of like a FEMA storm shelter, but it does not have any exterior windows.
We have... Just a few that are up.
Oh, they do pop up? Okay, apologies then.
But none at the kind of human scale level to that point.
But not on, not on an outer wall?
On the, on the south side, there are a few that pop up above that are, that would be on the outer wall.
Well, I'm not an engineer or an architect, but I'm just thinking since we're doing this and now you brought up approved storm shelter. I mean, there's a lot of kids and we do have tornadoes come through here, so I don't know what can be discussed or thought about and what kind of cost could incur to make sure that we're not going to have windows flying off and hitting a hundred kids in the gym.
Yeah, typically within these types of buildings, there are a lot of internal rooms, you know, within this facility. So between the locker rooms, the wrestling room, various storage rooms, we would have, yeah, adequate, yeah.
Jim?
So kind of a weird question, but given the transparency of the building and the amount of windows throughout the first floor, is there any utilization of privacy glass for security on that first floor?
We'll have further conversations around anything security-related later.
Sort of make a comment about the track. I wish it was all like in the gym and not in the classrooms. That's where I thought it was going to be.
Yeah, again, the struggle there was kind of the duplication of circulation. So we were really trying to be as efficient as possible with, with that. And again, kind of working through that, because if it's all in the gym, then we would also need kind of corridor space with, without that so that people aren't, you know, openly passing through the gym. So that was kind of the struggle. The other struggle again is the, kind of then, then the bleachers that are docking into that have a height limitation because obviously the head height, if there's a walking track above it. So it really kind of, kind of pinched us in sort of how the, the design and some of those limitations would exist. So again, we felt this, this solution, again, accommodated, you know, some degree of openness within the gym where we, where we thought it made the most sense. But, but again, we're trying to be most efficient kind of with, with overall circulation and layout of the building. I believe that's true, yeah. It's, I think, yeah, roughly 700 on each side.
Does the high school fit, is that about the same?
Your high school was 3,300, 3,200?
One of the, one of the requests from the middle school was to be able to do a all-school assembly to host their own promotion ceremony onsite. And so we were targeting, you know, the class of students being about 400 kids plus parents and everybody else, making sure that there was a good spot for them. So this gym does provide that 1,500. I think the current space maybe holds 500?
Yeah, the existing, my guess is yes, that's, that would probably about right. I don't know the exact count. Yeah, 500 and not an ideal 500 because it's on both, both sides without a front.
Yep. So that was, again, one of the reasons why the bleacher space did factor in substantially for us.
And how about the fitness center? How does that compare to the current, current fitness center, like size-wise?
I want to say it's about three times the size. It's a two, I believe we're looking at a 2,000-square-foot fitness center. The other one was one of the smaller classrooms where we packed everything in the current one.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Carolyn?
Can you show on the exterior view how you get from inside to like the outside where the track would be? Or just where gym classes, if they're going to utilize outside area, where they would be? I'm just curious about that.
So it's actually kind of this, this last progression that we had shown, walking out of the fitness. And then we'll hang a, hang a right out of the fitness door and then another right, and that would be out to the track and kind of playground area. I think there's another entrance on the other side of the music, kind of between music and that family consumer ed. There's another way out there as well. So this would be kind of out the door. And you can see the parking lot to the left there, and then the track is just beyond that. So basically down that, that sidewalk. Good idea. So we walked out, yeah, we walked out that door right there, and then there's another one to the left. So we walked out, yeah, we walked out that door right there, and then there's another one to the left again, on the other side of music coming out. That would be kind of more of a direct connection to the cafeteria.
I think it's important to note though, if you do, yeah, when you look at that space right there, there's about four hundred and fifty parking spots in this drawing. Parkview currently has about two hundred and fifty, and this is hard surface. You can see where it goes over by the district office and then where it goes by Claridan. So when we do have larger events, if, if an elementary school were to come over here for the, for the winter concert, for instance, there's a lot of hard surface that people would be able to walk on instead of having to go out on roads. I'm thinking a Big Bend, you know, for instance. So it does pull everything onto district property for the ease of any visitors that we have. And you can also see by the way, we have the driveway and then the sidewalk for those community members who are going to attend events at, at Field Park. We still have all of that, that hard surface that people can park on our property, walk across the road, enjoy the festival or whatever it is, and then get back to their cars with relative ease.
Note the turn in lane two.
Yep, Glenn, could you talk a little bit or Kurt about just the deceleration lane and what we're proposing to do on Veterans Way in eighty-three?
If you could zoom in on that Veterans Way. Yeah, so where you see the, on the top right, which is currently where you enter in the district office. So there'll be. There it is, alright. So that currently is where, when you enter the district office, you currently come through here. So that'll serve for district office, Claridan, and also for Parkview. Because we stagger the start times for Claridan and district office, this works. If the start times were the same time, it would be a challenge. But Parkview or middle school will come through here, drop off. A key piece is, is the drop off. If you recall now, that was one of our challenges we were looking at solving was not having cars back up into, onto Veterans Way. So we have a nice long queuing area. Another key piece to efficient drop off is having a long drop off area. So multiple cars, rather than three or four cars dropping off at one time, you can have five, six, you know, ten cars dropping off. So that, that helps the efficiency of, of getting that flow. So that'll be a drop off area for Parkview. And then coming into Claridan, they'll be coming in off of this and then turning right to come in. And following that same path then for district office and Claridan. So adding to the queuing there as well. And staggering those times is a key piece to that. So once they get into this area, everything will be the same as, as normal. As far as the exiting will continue to be out where it currently exits now.
There's also a right turn lane in there?
Yes, yep, so you'll, this will be a controlled intersection, so there will be traffic lights there as well, which will also help with, with, with the flow. So similar to the high school that it has sensors in it, so these lights are not going to be changing. If there's no, nobody waiting to get out, right? So we're not slowing, slowing down in traffic on Veterans Way. But when traffic is present, those sensors will detect that, and then these traffic lights will help control that as well. So you can turn left and right off of, off of, when you're exiting here.
Are you aware of anything like reconstruction on eighty-three around the intersection of Veterans Way and eighty-three?
Yeah, so a little bit of work as part of our project. Right now, there is a left turn lane right here, and we're going to be eliminating that because this was the entrance exit for Parkview, right? So we're eliminating that, and so the DOT is having us also eliminate the left turn lane because it no longer does anything, right? So we'll modify that. And then Maria, if you could just go down eighty-three. Go up a little bit. A little bit more. Yeah, so we're just doing a little bit, so that left, that left turn lane is, exists, we're just reworking this slightly. This will be, it'll look similar, it's just a small slight modification. This is roughly where that exit entrance is right now, and so we're going to utilize that same location, just a small island modification here. But it'll operate very similar, we'll have left turn in, you can right turn out. Yeah, this will be, this will be right turn out only, so you can't turn left out of here, it'll be right turn only. And then, and then entrance, yep.
Kurt, how about the inner, oh, sorry, how about the intersection on eighty-three and N? Are we doing anything with that or is that the state?
That's nothing as part of our project. I think when the traffic study, you're talking this area right here, right?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, nothing as part of our project. When, when we did our traffic impact study, there was another traffic impact study that the city or another developer did for some adjacent parcels that showed some work in there, but not as part of, not as part of our project.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep.
Carolyn, do you have something?
I appreciate the advancements in the virtual tour technology. We didn't have, the technology wasn't where it is today when we did the high school referendum. So it is kind of nice to see that level of detail that we got to see here. We didn't have that opportunity at the high school, so it's nice to have a bit of a preview before we put a shovel in the ground.
Any other questions or comments? Alright, thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you all.
Yeah, looks great.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, we're going to go to the twenty-four, twenty-five athletics and activities spring update. Mr. Trudell?
You can give some verbal updates while there's some open time here.
I've got a really short presentation, so.
This is going to take three minutes to log into, so just bear with me.
If you all want to follow along on, I think you have the presentation in your packet, yes?
Yes.
I'll just go through it, that'll save you some time rather, I know you got a late night tonight, so. Thank you first off for having me, I apologize that my graphics department isn't quite what Bray Architects is, so.
I'll let the graphics on your presentation.
Yeah, yeah, I knew you would like that front page. A little shorter presentation than, than most times when I come, the last time I was here was the end of April. So the majority of the spring activities I covered in that presentation. So today is strictly spring athletics and then a look ahead into the fall. We had a really, really good spring, every one of our programs was improved in some substantially from, from the previous season or from the previous year. Number of championships, you got them there in your packet, I'm not going to read them all off, but I would like to point out a couple. Boys, boys lacrosse made it to the state semifinals, that game was played at Kettle Moraine. Boys lacrosse, or lacrosse in general is a pretty new sport in Wisconsin. That was one of the most exciting games that I've attended as athletic director. We were down eight to three with like eight minutes to go, roared back to tie the game, went into overtime. Had like four shots on goal in overtime, couldn't get one in, double overtime, they ended up scoring a goal to, to knock us off. But super exciting game, really proud of the kids, and just neat to see that sport evolve. Really good crowd at Kettle Brains, so it was exciting to see. And then baseball, I'd like to mention them, and we'll have a slide on them in a minute, but they won a conference championship, which is always something that we want to, to highlight. Our girls soccer had a majorly improved season this year as well. Girls track, fifth place at state. I asked Matt Sherbarth, he believes that's the highest finish. He didn't know a hundred percent, but that's, that's a pretty remarkable finish for those girls as well. The next page is the highlight of the baseball conference championship. The last time that McQuanigo High School had won a conference championship in baseball was nineteen eighty-seven. I happen to be a practice player on that team, I served that role in nineteen eighty-seven, a long time ago. But it was cool, the game to clinch was at home, we played O'Condon Walk, ended up winning by a run. And the picture on the right there is, is Coach Miller, who's our, our new head coach, first year head coach. And then the gentleman on the left is Don Enright, who was the coach in nineteen eighty-seven when we won it last. So it was a pretty cool, pretty cool night at, at McQuanigo High School when they defeated O'Condon Walk to win that conference title. The next page, some individual highlights, again, I won't go through all them, lots of all conference awards for our various sports. A ton of, ton of kids recognized. Coach Miller, who I just mentioned, was named Classic Eight Coach of the Year for baseball in his first year, I thought that was pretty good. When we did our end of year discussion, I said, it's pretty tough to top the way you started off, we're going to have to go win state now. So he agreed that that would be a goal, which is great. I mean, girls lacrosse, I want to highlight Emily Simons, sophomore, first team all state. And our first ever All-American in girls lacrosse, which is.
Awesome.
Yeah, if you watch Emily, she is unbelievable, an unbelievable player, so great for her. And then Carly Hine, our girls lacrosse coach, was the Classic Eight Girls Lacrosse Coach of the Year. So I want to give a shout out to Coach Hine as well. Individual accomplishments, our tennis team had a, had a nice finish at, at state. Both our singles player and doubles team finished higher than, or the highest finish in, in MHS history, which was great. And in girls track, we had a number of state place winners, including the four by one state championship team of Scarlett Anzel, Emma Craig, Ella Schuler, and Leila Prezendorfer. And the next slide is a picture of those four young ladies. Remarkable thing, this is the third year, or third time in four years that we have won the four by one at girls state track. So we have become a girls sprint, actually our boys sprinters are pretty darn good too, but kind of become a sprint school, which is, which is neat. But congratulations to those young ladies. Onto twenty-five, twenty-six, you got the, the fall sport dates there. Homecoming, I know I get questions from time to time what homecoming is from the board, so I included that. It's early this year, which is good, hopefully weather wise will be, will be wonderful for homecoming. And I just wanted to update you on our track and scoreboard projects, both, I know you've all probably driven by and, and checked it out. Both are on schedule, the beams went up for the scoreboard last week. The blue surface for the track is scheduled to go in next week, and then painting of the lines and markings and whatnot, we'll follow that. So far on schedule, hopefully weather cooperates and we'll get that done. First football game is, we host week one, so that's August twenty-second, so we've got to have it all, all done by then. And pretty confident that, that that will happen. And that's all I have for you, unless you have some questions.
I just have a question, I know we had the like temporary seating coming in, are we doing the same thing?
Yeah, Stephanie and I were just talking about that, it's going to be, it's going to be different, we're not a hundred percent sure what we're going to do yet. Because of the new surface, we don't want to compromise that at all, but we will have seating in that end zone for our, our high school crew as well, or as, as usual.
Any other questions or comments? Alright, thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, have a great night.
Thank you, Andy.
Alright, moving on to twenty-four, twenty-five, year in review.
So thank you, we're going to just go over and look at the highlights of this past school year. It had, was a, as we put this together, it was remarkable school year, we accomplished a lot. Wanted to just point out some of the big points of that, and then also talk a little bit about where we're going to be going. What some of our areas of focus are for twenty-five, twenty-six. So again, we'll go department by department, cover some key highlights, and then just our, you know, reinforce our commitment to the ongoing progress monitoring to the board and to our community. If we go into twenty-four, twenty-five, our goals, we set these goals in the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And these goals were set with the purpose of being multi-year goals. The first is academic related, school report card related, to be in a top ten position by the Department of Public Instruction. And then each school be in a top ten percent position on the school report cards, and we'll show you where we have arrived at in that area. And then the district will be a destination district for staff and residents by ensuring the responsible, efficient use of fiscal resources and building a supportive professional culture, and we'll touch on some of those highlights this year. Some big things, just big, big, big work done this past school year. Started off, just kind of a year in review going back, purchase and then the development of the SOAR location. I know that the board had a number of years, I think six or seven years worth of conversations as to where we could end up. We were able to locate a spot and we found a permanent home now for the thirty to thirty-five students who are going there. We hired and onboarded forty-four new staff members. November fifth, we passed the referendum and we saw kind of where that project has evolved to. The district was designated as exceeds expectations on our DPI school report cards. We ranked thirty-second out of three hundred and sixty-seven K-12 districts in the state. Our high school increased its average composite ACT score by point seven from the twenty-three school year to the twenty-four school year. We adopted curriculum and resources in elementary math, K-five bridges, K-six I-REDDY at Eagleville. And then in April, we were able to celebrate Mr. Luke Spielman, he was award of the Osso Middle School Principal of the Year. Related to our goal on financial work and, and our financial stability, our bond rating increased from double A to double A plus. We have maintained through our district operational budget, again, the purchase of SOAR, district wide HVAC controls, McQuanigo High School, that new roof section that went in, the buildings and ground storage facility. Claridan is in the process of getting a new roof, the scoreboard that Andy mentioned and the track. And then the technology infrastructure switch upgrades, which is currently in progress. Our health clinic, we expanded from four days to five days per week and added forty-three hours of coverage. We added a nurse navigator to help schedule surgeries, procedures, et cetera. Again, trying to make this as high quality of an experience for our employees as possible. The self-insurance, successfully completed our second year in self-insurance. We built up a reserve of two point seven million dollars as of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. This puts us in a great position, we transferred over nine hundred thousand dollars to individual teacher four oh three B accounts. And then the salary model, we talked about that quite a bit last year, getting our staff right sized, so the work of the board, Tom and Rachel really put us in a good position to, to get our staff in line with where our market comps are. Tom, if you could go to the next slide please, and then click on the district strategic learning objectives. So these are the indicators that we're striving for every year, and if you see it in yellow, that means that we are in progress on it. If you see it in green, it's a goal that we have then accomplished. And seven of our eight schools currently exceed expectations or higher on the DPI school report card. Our benchmark reading, the CBM reading in grade one, our goal, we're currently at eighty percent. And then we are shooting for an eighty-five percent rate in that regard. You can see where we're at from forward exam information, we're meeting or exceeding in the areas of forward exam. If you could scroll down a little bit, Tom, please. Our ACT composite is climbing up there towards that goal of twenty-two. Stephanie and her team at the high school have things focused and they're doing an outstanding job. Remarkable, our students score for students with disabilities achieving an eighteen. Again, great work by our special education department and all that they're doing to make sure our kids are hitting their academic goals. The industry credentials is a work in progress, and we continue to focus on our CTE programming. You can see how we're doing around AP. Our students with disabilities again, meeting proficiency on state assessments. Tom, if you could scroll down. We have the MTSS system, so this is what we're doing to support students who have academic or behavioral needs. The academic component is complete, and we're continuing to work on the behavior component, and we'll learn more about that in the weeks ahead. You can see from a staffing standpoint, now we get into more of our operational goals, that we are just shy of that benchmark that we sent from a staff retention rate, which is an outstanding thing for us. We do spend a lot of time and energy in onboarding new staff and getting them used to teaching in McQuanigo. We want to see the folks that we have stick around. You can see where we're at from a salaries perspective. You can see the growth that we've had, when it comes down to the employees favorable response to I would recommend MASD is a great place to work. Our goal is ninety percent, that's a very. Our goal is 90%, that's a very high goal, and we continue to work for it in that area. Scroll down, you can see where we're at from the SLO standpoint, the fund balance mark, and then it is our goal, obviously, to complete 100% of our capital maintenance projects from our operating budget. Tom, if you could go back to the presentation. Scroll into the next slide, we'll start to touch on where we're at from department by department. You can see in student learning this past year, the 24-25 priorities. We had Act 20, bridges, the guaranteed and viable curriculum, professional learning communities, and then housing for curriculum documents. And 26, 25, 26, you'll see then where we are going. I think one of the things to note on there is we have done, and we continue to do a great job around our piloting and our resource adoption, our curriculum adoption, but one of the threads that we see as critical for our organization to continue to improve is that professional learning communities, where we've been, where we started from, where we've been, and where we continue to go. So our work in PLCs next year will really address assessment work. We'll be talking about instructional practices, making sure that, you know, we have the assessments in place, but teachers are using the best possible pedagogy in their classrooms. And then we're gonna continue to build on that guaranteed and viable curriculum as a goal for our organization. Next slide, please. Student services, you saw the area, the ELA in math, just improving outcomes and how we've hit some of those targets. We'll continue to have that focus going into next school year. Continue to define expectations for student behavior, including the proactive strategies and interventions. This has been a goal that we've worked on, both from the board, through our administration, and into our schools. It is an area of focus for us. Continue to build leadership capacity for student services staff through strategic professional development and collaboration. Christine and Angela have done an outstanding job of planning out our PD, and we will continue to do that for next school year. And then continued growth in the compliance practices around IEPs and 504 plans. Those are the ones that carry the federal and the state eyes on what we do in the school district, and we want to make sure that we're serving our students with disabilities the best we can. Next slide, please. Human resources, last year, we did implement this past year, a new model for teacher and administration, administrative evaluation. Going into next school year, we're gonna dig into that model a little bit more and do work around professionalism, domain six in the strong model. We are gonna continue our efforts around staff retention through climate, culture, and goal-oriented monthly action steps. Our elementary principal coaching and evaluation will be transferring to Rachel. Facilitating the wellness committee and improving the HR processes and systems to make more work effective, efficient, and streamlined. So, again, carrying from 24-25 into 25-26. Tom, if you could scroll. In finance and facilities, we do have a lot going on, in particular in this area, and you can see this work. This is, this becomes the, you know, the highlight and the focus for our community. 25-26, the budget development, the new middle school project, Year Three of our health plan, maintaining the focus on facility planning, continuing our efforts in that 10-year plan. It's extremely important for us. And then school safety and selecting and beginning to install a possible new safety system in our district. And then district-wide, again, review possibly and revise our district mission, vision, and values with our stakeholders. So we did do a little bit of work on this and a little bit of looking at it and making sure that we, that we have a mission and a vision statement that actually articulates what we needed to articulate as an organization, and those are aligned to our community values. So we'll begin doing some work going into the 25-26 school year on that. Again, utilizing our budget for competitive salary and benefits, the 10-year facility study, the construction at Parkview Middle School. We are hoping to break ground in September. You heard that presentation earlier. That'll be a very exciting time for us, once the shovel hits the ground. Support, develop, and grow our organization around our strategic objectives. And then we're gonna be putting together two larger committees going into next year, our Curriculum Council and our Student Behavior Committee. And so those will be two drivers of a lot of our goals that you saw on those previous Any questions?
Any questions? Carolyn?
Just with what you said about the middle school with breaking ground, are we going to have a need to do any calendar adjustments in the coming years for that? I probably should have asked it during their presentation, but when you mentioned breaking ground, I thought about that, so...
So I've asked Rachel to start the calendar process essentially after school starts this year. We'll be in September, and we'll be starting to pull ideas together with the calendar. There, we benefit next year's calendar, we have a two-week Christmas break. So that longer period of time is gonna be helpful for the construction company, particularly if the weather is good. We will end next school year at the scheduled time. It's the following year, then, that we would possibly be looking at doing some things with the calendar. And, you know, some of the ideas are, can we finish school by June 1? If we can get out on June 1st, we give the construction company another week-and-a-half access. And I've talked to them about, you know, how beneficial is this before we would make that adjustment? And there was, they feel that that would give them, you know, a good leg up into that particular summer. In order to accomplish that, we might have to look at the start time and the end time of school, and maybe lengthening the school day. With that, we could utilize the extra days, then, that would be in the teacher contract, if you will, to do curriculum work, to do professional learning right as school lets out. So we have a number of things that we need to work through, but what we are gonna do is work on that calendar earlier, right after school starts, get that in front of the board for approval, so families can plan for that following year.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you.
Great year. It's good to see it all up there. Oh, yeah, we forgot about that.
It was quite a reflection this past year, yes.
Very busy. All right, moving on to consent agenda, looking for the approval of the school board meeting minutes of June 16th, 2025, and approval of vouchers and receipts. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, that's approved by consent. Moving on down to policy.
We've had some conversations just around open enrollment, and in LinkedIn here, you'll see Policy 5113, Open Enrollment Program. That's our current policy. And then you will see 3756.001. That PDF document is some proposed policy changes that we would like to bring forward. And so we're just bringing it forward for your viewing tonight, have an opportunity to take a look at it. But what this does is it really defines and puts some parameters in and around how we would be handling open enrollment. Students who are accepted in open enrollment, how they would be placed, how we would make space determinations, how we would handle disciplinary issues that might be associated with a student who is here under open enrollment, and then the steps that we would take, you know, obviously, to address that. So you can go through and see what is struck. You can take a look at the language that is in the policy. We did work with our legal counsel. We took some feedback. I took feedback back to them for what were some recommended changes, and they have given us the best possible language to use.
Any questions on that? All right, thank you. Moving on to personnel topics. Teachers on Call, Kelly Education.
All right, Tom, can you pull up the presentation, please? So I'm just gonna give you a update on a year, really, at a glance, around our sub-platform, which is Teachers on Call, and they are switching, Kelly Education just purchased Teachers on Call, so they're making a slow transition to being called Kelly Education. So for the next year, you're gonna hear Teachers on Call slash Kelly Education, because that's how long it'll take for everybody to get in sync with it being Kelly Education. So this is just a snapshot of the year at a glance. We had an overall fill rate of 85%. In terms of teachers, we had a fill rate of 93%, and in terms of paraprofessionals, we had a fill rate of 59%. So that's where we got that 85% average. We onboarded 114 new substitutes, and two kind of priorities of Teachers on Call, Kelly Education, were doing school visits and then really prioritizing communication and accessibility, so making sure that they understood what the school experience was for our building substitutes, and then communicating and trying to recruit subs actively. So in terms of our school year trends, we saw this year a slight decrease in our fill rates. I mean, not even a full percentage point. And what we attributed that to is just we saw a pretty significant increase in the number of paraprofessional absences. And so knowing that that is a really difficult position to fill when our subpool is so small, again, we did see a slight decrease in that. In terms of our teacher fill rate, we actually saw an increase. Tom, you can go ahead and switch.
Rachel, do we do any communicating with Teachers on Call, like getting feedback of what we could do better for them?
Yep, yeah. Every month, I meet with our rep, and we have that kind of conversation. We look at all of this data, but on a monthly basis, and have that, yeah, exact conversation.
Thank you.
And so in terms of this data point, this is really important, and this is something, Dale, to your point, actually, this is something that we met with our administrators right around the mid-year mark and shared this with them, because something that we were noticing is that if we could get a large lead time, so if we could get at least 12 hours or more notice that somebody was gonna be absent, the ability to find coverage, to find a sub, went up dramatically. And so if you look at these data points, when we are underneath that 12-hour mark, it's really hard. We're at 66% for a teacher sub, and then only 16% for a para-sub. Whereas if we are between that 12 to 24-hours notice, that jumps to 72% for a teacher and 31% for a paraprofessional. And then if we can get at least a day's notice, we're all the way up to 98% for a teacher and 76% for a paraprofessional. And so something that we asked our principals to message is just really emphasizing that as soon as you know you're going to be absent, entering that absence into frontline, we know that we have a workforce that doesn't like to be absent. We've all seen the teachers who are saying, "It's just easier for me to come to school than to create subplans." And so, again, we had that conversation that it's, again, really important to get that lead time, because that's when we can essentially get the better coverage. Tom, can you flip? So this is why teachers are absent. So we look at this data to really get a better understanding of what can we control and what can't we control, and then looking at, again, the reasons that teachers are gone. And so, obviously, the number-one reason, and we would expect this, that teachers are absent is because they are entering in sick time. What we also, then, again, are monitoring is, are there absences that, again, we can control? So you'll see that there is, you know, a significant number of absences because teachers are attending curriculum or workshops, or testing, or, you know, just various other things. And so those are, those are data points that then I come back and I work with Angela and her team, or working with Christine and her team, to say, "Can we reduce this?" Because we know that teachers being in the classroom is a really important factor, and we know that, again, it places a burden on the system when we have to pull the teacher from the classroom and then fill that vacancy. And so the less that we have to do that, the better it is for the system. And so the first year that we looked at this data, these numbers were far higher. We have decreased those numbers. We're kind of, we're kicking ourselves in the foot significantly. And some of these, you're just gonna not avoid, right? So talking to the high school, you're not gonna avoid needing coverage for something like AP testing. We have to cover that, we have to proctor that. And again, some of the curricular work, it has to get done. But again, if we can really make sure that we're doing that purposefully and thoughtfully so that we're not, again, kicking ourselves in the foot by pulling teachers out of the classroom and then having to find somebody to fill that, that's gonna be really important. The next piece of data that we look at is looking at individual school fill rates, and the reason that we look at this is to really ensure that there's not a school that stands out as subs don't want to go there, or buildings are not entering in their absences accurately. And so you can see that, for the most part, all of our buildings really have a pretty consistent sub fill rate. Big Bend was a little bit of an outlier this year, and when we dig into that, one of the number-one reasons that we hear is location. And so our subpool generally picks schools that are within the proximity of somewhere close to that, where they live. And so our subpool for Big Bend is just a smaller subpool. But again, we wanna dig into feedback on if we hear that, you know, this building, you know, sometimes we'll hear a narrative feedback that subs don't want to go to this school. And we always, again, want to use data to drive those decisions and drive that narrative, and the data just doesn't suggest that we have schools that are, that subs don't want to go to. So this is our analysis when we look at, are there different days of the week, are there, that subs are harder to get than others? And hands-down, Fridays are more difficult to get a sub. And as you can imagine, Fridays are also one of the most popular days for teachers to request off. Next year, we have implemented, if you remember, two personal days for teachers. And so we are anticipating that we're gonna see an even bigger increase in the number of Fridays that teachers request off. And so going kind of hand-in-hand with this is one of our action steps around this data point, so I'll get to it. But what we're going to be talking about is a Friday sub incentive. And so, Tom, if you want to go to the next slide... Can you scroll down a little bit? So in comparison to other districts, our subrates are right on par. So we are not, you're not gonna go to District A, which is our neighboring district, and get paid significantly more. You're not gonna go to District B and get paid significantly more. So we're right on par, but what other districts have done is incentivized, again, certain days of the week to be, again, more attractive to fill those vacancies, when, again, they know that they have hard-to-fill days. And so that is something that we are looking at. Additionally, knowing that we have just a lower pool of paraprofessionals, we're gonna look to incentivize that as well. And so I believe that's the next slide, Tom. So this is our talent pool. I kind of already talked about this. We have 179 total people in our talent pool. We, the number-one, again, paraprofessional request is from special education paraprofessionals. Our regular ed paraprofessional bank is pretty small in the district as it is. And so, again, we really want to grow that special education paraprofessional bank, because those are the people who, when they call in sick, are difficult to fill. And Tom, if you go to the next one? And so how we're looking to do that is, one, again, we're looking at creating a Friday incentive, so we're looking to increase the sub wage for Fridays between the months of December through May. So again, the first few months of school, most teachers, you know, are not taking their personal days. Our attendance rates in terms of illness are still, we're still pretty good. But again, December hits, and everybody is sick, people want to use their personal days, and so we're looking at doing a Friday incentive. We're going to continue to talk to staff about communicating early when they're going to be absent, because, again, if you, again, look at those percentages, 98% fill rate, if you can tell us at least a day in advance. And then we're gonna be looking at a referral bonus for paraprofessional subs. So if you know somebody, what we do right now is we do have an employee referral bonus. If we hire somebody on, and you had referred that person, you get a $250 referral bonus. We're gonna be looking to offer that same referral bonus for paraprofessional subs, and then look at some potential other incentives for our paraprofessionals. We have a subcommittee that we're gonna be, not a committee, it's really gonna be just a group of people that come together once or twice in the beginning of the year to essentially give us feedback on how we can get more paraprofessionals. Our paraprofessionals don't work during the summer, but just looking at what we can potentially do in addition to a referral bonus to help onboard some more of those, that category, so that, again, we can fill some of those vacancies. And that's all I have.
Hi, Rachel.
Hi, Mike.
The data that you were saying that the outlier on Big Bend was the distance people have to drive, does that come from Teachers on Call?
Correct.
Okay, so if the data, if someone who's working for them doesn't submit anything to them, you don't see it?
Correct. We, we do ask, so our building administrative assistants are the first people that the building, that the substitute checks in with, and then they are supposed to check out with. We do ask our building administrative assistants to check in with all of our building, you know, the substitutes. How did it go? How was your experience? How was your experience? So we do have that anecdotal feedback as well. And again, none of our buildings are sitting where it's like, you know, 50% fill rates. They're all sitting fairly high.
Thank you.
Jake? Was, what was the notice requirement for the personal days?
For a teacher to take his or her personal day? So they have to get it approved by their building principal. There is not necessarily a notice requirement as long as their building principal approves it.
Okay. Would that be a feasible strategy to get better fill rates? I know part of the reason we implemented those was to get more notice rates so that we could get better fill rates if we made that.
Yeah, I'd have to, yeah, I'd have to go back and look at the exact handbook language. I don't, we might have that language in there. I don't know if, I don't think it's a very common practice that teachers are giving notice, are giving fewer than 24 hours notice for a personal day. I think those are coming in with a lot of notice for most teachers.
Not a common occurrence.
Yeah, I don't think the personal day is a common occurrence at all for teachers to give short notice on those.
Thank you.
About long-term subs? We know a teacher's going to be gone for two months for stability in the classroom. How often do we get like that same sub in there throughout that time?
For a regular classroom position, I would say that that's very common that we're able to secure that. We have a fantastic candidate, we have a fantastic retiree pool of long-term subs. So people who are willing to come back. We do pay a higher sub rate for our retirees. And so we have a really great candidate pool for that. For special education long-term subs, that has historically been a harder to fill position, especially for a long-term basis. But we have been able to do it. Sometimes it's just piecemealing, you know, reshifting caseloads, doing things like that. But I would say for our regular ed positions, we've been able to fill those with just, again, most of the time it's retired teachers who are able to come in and do a really great job for us.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you. Co-curricular handbook.
So this is just an update. You may have remembered last year, we have a co-curricular handbook where all of our athletics and activities at the secondary level are listed and then their stipends are listed as well. The process for how to get a co-curricular activity approved is in there. And essentially what we've done is we want to look at this on an annual basis. And so we have a team of teachers at the elementary level, middle school level, high school level, as well as our administrators. Andy Trudell is the athletic director, as well as Josh Court, the activities and athletic director at the middle school. And then, again, administration are on that team. And we have come together to just revise that again. What we'd like to do is make that a K-12 athletics and activities co-curricular handbook so that it's all in one place. And so I'll be bringing a draft of that on the August, the first August meeting for some discussion and then looking to approve that prior to the school year starting.
Any questions on that? All right, I just want to thank you for all you work on our handbooks. That's a great job, thank you.
So then the last one is our, the actual handbook then. So we are also just, again, doing an annual revision of our support staff and our professional staff handbook. And so just, these are just really minor tweaks. And these are just to, again, stay current with any state or federal guidelines and changes that are being made. One of the big ones that you will notice in the, in the August meeting is that in the support staff handbook, there has always been a special ed addendum, a separate handbook for special ed support staff. And what we are doing, again, is combining those into one handbook so that it's a one-stop shop for people to go. And so, again, if you've never looked at the special ed support staff handbook, you'll be able to see that one as well. But otherwise, they're very minor changes. We've put a lot of work into those my first year here when we created them. So just minor changes.
Questions? All right, thank you. Moving on to student learning topics, human growth and development.
All right, Tom, can you pull up the presentation? I have just one informational item for you tonight, and that's an update regarding the district's human growth and development curriculum. So I'll just provide a review of district policy and state statute around human growth and development, give an overview of what is taught, at which levels, give a summary of the most recent review that was done in this area, and then talk about next steps for this area. Next slide. So Maguano does have board policy that directs the district to provide human growth and development instruction that is consistent with the state statute. So according to the state statute for human growth and development, they encourage districts to provide instruction in human growth and development. And if a district chooses to do that, then there are some specific requirements. The state statute specifies the specific instructional topics that need to be addressed. It also talks about parent notification. So we are required to notify parents regarding the curriculum and the content on an annual basis. And we'll talk later in the presentation about what that looks like. We are also required to provide an option for parents to opt out of the human growth and development content. And then the state statute also specifies requirements for an advisory committee. So when we are reviewing and revising our human growth and development curriculum, there are some specific requirements for the membership of an advisory committee. In Maguano, we have specific human growth and development instruction at the grade levels of fourth, seventh, and ninth. So I'll just give a quick overview of what is taught at each of those grade levels and who it is taught by. And then the specific content and the resources that are used are linked on each of the slides for each grade level for your information as well. So in fourth grade, the boys and the girls are taught in specific gender groups. The district nurse, who is a female, teaches the girls groups. And then the male PE teachers at the elementary level instruct the boys groups. The instruction for fourth grade is in regards to changes that students' bodies go through. So this includes information regarding puberty. That information is specific to each gender group. And then it also covers personal hygiene and how to keep our bodies healthy. Next slide. For seventh grade, our human growth and development curriculum is taught in science class by our seventh grade science teachers. So the topics for seventh grade include puberty, abstinence, sexually transmitted infections, and then pregnancy and childbirth.
Let me ask Christine a question. Christine, are any studies like how many students in middle school are having sex? Sorry.
Okay.
Off the top of my head.
You know, my mind would probably go to looking at the youth risk behavioral survey that the state gives. We did not administer that survey this last year. We opted out this year. But I could pull some data from there. And I could also, let me do some digging. Can I get back to you?
No problem.
Off the top of my head, can't give you a number, but I'll do some looking.
All right, thanks.
All right, so then in ninth grade, the human growth and development curriculum is taught in health class by a licensed health teacher. So health is a required course for our ninth graders. But there are two options. One of those health courses has the human growth and development component. The other health course does not. So families and students can select the course that they prefer. In terms of topics for ninth grade, this includes relationships, media technology, abstinence, the reproductive system, the menstrual cycle and pregnancy, birth control, and then sexually transmitted infections and diseases. And again, all the content is linked for all of those areas for you. In regards to parent communication, the district website has links to all of this content and all of the resources that are used. That is available under the curriculum section on our website and it is available at all times for anyone to review. Then in addition to that information, parents of students in fourth and seventh grade are sent a communication that goes out before the curriculum is taught. That communication, again, details everything, all of the topics. It gives the, the links to the material and then provides that option for parents to opt out of the content. At the secondary level, the MHS course catalog details those two different options for the health classes. And then, again, students and families select the option that they prefer. So the last review and revision of the human growth and development curriculum was during the 22, 23 school year. There was a committee that was convened in July of 2022 with representation that was consistent with the state statute. So I had talked about that a little bit earlier. The committee had 14 members. That included district administration, teachers, a counselor, a community member, a member of the clergy, parents, two of which of the parents were healthcare professionals, and then a high school student. The committee met five times between July and September and they reviewed all of our resources and curriculum and made some recommendations for some revisions. The school board then approved those revisions in December of 22, 2022. Some of the major changes that were approved included moving the human growth and development lessons at the elementary level from fifth grade to fourth grade. This change was due to the timing of physical changes that occur for students. Another change was putting the personal hygiene content in third grade as well as fourth grade. And then the board also approved the instructional materials that were recommended by the committee for both the elementary grade levels and for seventh grade. Next slide. So next steps in terms of human growth and development. Our next revision for human growth and development is aligned to our curriculum renewal cycle for physical education. So the next review of physical education is set to begin in the 26, 27 school year. This is compliant with state statute, which encourages review of curriculum and instruction on a regular cycle. We will also continue to provide training and support for the teachers and staff who deliver instruction around human growth and development. And then we will continue to monitor any updates of human growth and development from the federal and state level. The last update to the legislation for Wisconsin was in 2012. But we will definitely keep an eye on this to see if there are any changes in this area. Last slide is just if you have any questions.
I think Stephanie Blue said she wanted to head up the next one. All kidding aside, I want to say thanks to Stephanie. I sat in on most of all of those meetings and she did a great job managing all those personalities and very strong personalities with a lot of different opinions. And I thought she did a great job guiding the meeting. So thanks. Any other questions? All right, thank you. Moving on to student service topics. I'm sorry about that. I just remember when you gave us those numbers last time about the middle school. I was pretty surprised and higher than I anticipated.
Yes. I'll bring that back for our next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, the first piece I have for tonight is just our end of the year nursing report. So every year I bring to the board a summary of what our nursing services look like in the district. And so this is just an overall summary of that. We have had a surprising 64,624 health room visits this last school year. And on that board memo that I shared with you, I don't know if you can bring that up, Tom? On there. So just as a reminder, all of our health rooms across the district are staffed by a full-time health room assistant. And we really have fabulous people who work in that role often. Many of our health room assistants have a medical background, even though that's not necessarily required for the role. And then we have one full-time nurse, which is Noel Mengi. I know you guys have met her before. So we have a breakdown then at the bottom between 23, the school year of 23, 24, and then the 24, 25 school year. So our kids do visit our health rooms a lot. So we've talked a little bit about, because it seems like such an overly large number when you look at it in total. But our kids go there for anything from bumped my, you know, knee on the playground. I have a scrape, I need a Band-Aid, I need mittens, gloves, boots, snack, to needing medication. So they are definitely making use of the health room.
Christine, why do we go to the health room for snacks?
So some of our, we always keep backup snacks there. So some of our students who might have insulin or are dying.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
In addition to that, the daily usage, we also had several, not, I'm looking at the 911, 11 911 calls district-wide this year. So that when those calls go out, we get notified here at the district office. And then our health rooms collaborate with building administrator, building administration to provide timely care and response to our students. We also had, the health room in general supports roughly 1,769, I say roughly, but that's actually a very specific number, documented chronic health conditions. So when you think about our student population being, you know, it's under 5,000, we have several different health conditions that our health room assistants do a great job monitoring care for. And again, that could be anything from asthma to diabetes to something more. It could be cancer treatment, et cetera. So from one spectrum all the way to the other.
Sorry, real quick.
Sure.
On the 911 calls, how, how does that work? I don't understand. If 911 is dialed from one of our schools, does it go to our health room?
Generally, it's the health room calling 911.
Okay. Because the way it was, it said they responded to 11 911 calls.
So, so could be the, it could be the main office, but all of our main offices and health rooms are right next to each other in all of our buildings right now. So it could be that the main office gals 911 and the health room goes out to the playground to respond.
Gotcha.
Or it could be the health room is calling.
All right, that makes sense, thanks.
Yeah. So this is just an overall look. Our health assistants, along with Noel, also do CPR certification for our staff, which has been great to bring that onsite. And we're not paying somebody else to do that. They're able to certify our staff. So that's been working really great with our coaches and extracurricular, people that come in and out of our buildings and work with our students. I mean, in general, they have a lot on their hands. They're fantastic people that take care of our kids every day in our district. And I really can't say any, you know, anything that it's all positive. They're great people, very thankful that we have them. Do you guys have any questions about the roles of the nursing support we provide? Any additional questions about this?
I remember I was meeting with Joe on Thursday. I was asking about cutting some of those down. But unfortunately, state law, it's in the way for like aspirin.
Yeah, a little bit. Yeah, so, yeah. But they honestly, they're, I do think there's probably some things we could do a little bit different, like maybe making sure all of our classrooms have Band-Aids, ice packs, that kind of stuff, if that's possible. So we can talk more about that.
Thanks.
All right, you ready for?
Yep.
All right, the last thing I have tonight is just our annual student behavior data, just an end of the year summary. Stephanie is here tonight also. I don't think I have a mic for you, so we'll grab one. Because we'll be talking about just an update on the cell phone policy and the random drug testing. I brought that mid-year as an update, but I asked her to come back again tonight. All right, so this presentation, we're going to just do a look at our CARESALIS support. I'm going to touch on the GALS Institute. And then also just dig in deeper into our behavior data. So looking at our student code of conduct, bullying, and then our suspension rate. And so we'll talk a little bit about that. The first piece is just going over that CARESALIS. I know you guys have seen this platform quite a few times, but I just wanted to show you the end of the year summary. the end of the year summary. So we had 115 cases, which means 115 students were seen, not seen by, but worked with the mental health navigator. So that's a total of 6,422 communications, and those are broken down additionally to the right side. So how many phone calls did they make? How many handoffs did they actually make where they talked from the parent to the provider and then had that direct connection made up? We have, just looking at, out of those 115 referrals, also we had 23 who declined services. And then we did have 51 who, 51 students who then were able to secure care through a mental health provider. And then that anonymous search piece, that isn't counted into the 115. Obviously, it's anonymous, so people are using the CARESALIS dashboard to look for services, but we don't know, it's a resource at this time. Did you have a question, question about that, Dale?
Yes, what is the total unreachable?
It means that a referral was made by a staff member and CARESALIS, again, is that mental health navigator piece, they were unable to reach a family. So looking at, again, the continuum of needs, we have just sort of a ranking of what our students and parents are calling and getting support for, with anxiety and depression being the highest, going all the way down into that trauma, ADHD, disruptive behavior, suicide, could be a marital situation, OCD, eating, and then bipolar. When we look again over at that age on the right-hand side, we have a pretty, pretty split from the adults to our adolescents. So if you're looking from three through the age of 17, and then adults starting at 18. So that brings me to the next slide on student, our student data on mental health support. So every year I start to pull information, looking at what are our students in some of our most unique situations? Like what are, how many students are we looking? What supports do we have? What supports do we need to continue to look at? So for our elementary students, we have 20 students that, across all of the buildings, so that either had incidents that were related to suicide ideation, an attempt, or self-harm. Of those 20 students, we had three students that did receive inpatient or intensive outpatient treatment. Our secondary data looks at our seventh graders through our 12th graders. So we had a total of 81 students that, again, had incidents related to either a suicide attempt, considering suicide, or looking at self-harm. Of those 81, 30 of our students did receive either a hospitalization stay and/or inpatient or outpatient treatment. So I put an asterisk on there just because this data is as, it says, it is reported as to what we're aware of. So we don't always know if a, if a student is receiving treatment over summer. So it is the data that we have from the information that parents provide us with or a contact that has been made to us on behalf of like a Rogers or Aurora Health. So our role is continuing to work with our outside agencies to support students during the day, whether that is virtual support or we do have life stands that still comes to the high school to provide onsite therapy. We will continue to partner with our county resources. There are a variety of different things that Waukesha County offers. And so part of our role is to continue to access any resources that we can and build that partnership. We also look at expanding our professional development and training for student, for student services staff. So we might have a speaker, we have had a speaker come in from Waukesha County around like mandated reporting and has provided some really great insight on what that looks like from a county perspective. We're always looking at growing our internal resources and tools to help support kids and then working collaboratively with parents and then our community resources. So for the last several years, we have partnered with the GALS Institute, and we're going to change our relationship with them in the upcoming school year. In the past, they were able to really provide us with what we call like a student assistance program. So parents or families who couldn't get in to see anybody because there was just like a really long waiting list, GALS would be able to do some like interim counseling for us. And they are not able to continue to do that with us just because of the demand. And so we're going to continue to work with them at sort of an à la carte level, like if we have a presentation or some community education that we would want them to be part of. But we are going to look to grow our partnerships and resources in other places into this next school year. All right. So our first two slides are, have Stephanie talk about. Our first one is random drug testing, and then the second one will be our cell phone policy.
So again, once a month, we conduct random drug testing. The students sign at the beginning of the year, and it's part of board policy. Any students who park, get a parking pass on our campus, or who are involved in athletics or activities can, can be pulled for this random drug test. We have moved that from a separate company now to our health clinic, which is, has been great this year. So we have 10 students who are tested randomly every month, led to 90 students this year. Out of those 90, we had 11 positive results. Those positive results are a combination of nicotine that we will have, they can test positive for, to a more serious drug. In all cases, parents are notified of negative or positive results. They're actually notified that their child's name has been pulled and they are going to be taken down for the random drug tests. And then they are notified after, with the test results. If, if the student tests positive, not for nicotine, but for a more serious drug, they do have their parking privileges revoked if that's why they're being pulled and it's an athletic code violation also.
How many of the 11 were not for nicotine?
Two.
Okay.
Questions on that? Okay, and then the cell phone policy. I guess I want to start before we go through it, by just thanking the board for being brave in passing that policy. It's a game changer. And I, as I'm watching other districts decide to go in that direction, I'm starting to be contacted by other principals saying, how'd you do it? And it's, it's nice that we're there already. So thank you for that. I think almost every adult and many of our students, if they're being honest, will say that the results in the building have, have been great. So we average still at the end of the year, I would say one to six communication devices confiscated in a day, almost all of them in the form of cell phones. And you can see on the side, our end of the year results. We had overall 414 students, so about a quarter of our student population did have a first offense at some point during, during the year. That first offense, the way that we wrote it up is a, it's a warning. They get their, their phones back at the end of the day. The student can pick them up. It is a warning, but we did contact home in every single case because we really wanted to, to partner with the parents. And so that first offense is an email that goes home and says, the next time you're going to have to help us by picking it up. We give that warning, which I think was crucial in, in the solid communication. 143 kids then had a second offense. Starting with the second offense, a parent has to come and pick up that cell phone, and we won't just hand it back to the students. 59 then moved to a third offense sometime during the course of the year. The parent continues to pick it up. With our third offense, we now require that the student turn that cell phone in at the beginning of the day, and we keep it because we've said three times, we gave you a chance for this and you're not able to control it. We actually had really good parent feedback on that. They were saying, yeah, clearly he can't control it. You take it for the day. In general, really good parent cooperation with that. 22 hit the fourth offense, and at that point, we, nope, I take that back. 22 hit the fourth offense, and at that point, we lengthen the time that we're going to take, I think the third offense is a week that we have the students drop it off. Fourth offense becomes a month. And nine hit a fifth offense, and we pull the students in with parents, required parent meeting, where we then warn that the next offense is going to be a suspension for the day. And that is not something we want to do for a cell phone violation. You will see that none of them moved on to a sixth offense, which we consider to be super, super successful in the course of the year. So, yeah, again, parents have been, I would say, overall great partners with us. September was bumpy. And then I think when people realized that, that the phones were still on the kids, the kids could grab them in the case of an emergency, that, that helped quite a bit. A huge shout out to our teachers too, because as all, all good things in, in schools, the teachers bear the weight of making sure that this is followed and that there's solid communication around it. And our teachers were wonderful. And again, I think they would say they saw the benefit from it in the classroom.
So returning students, if they have a first time offense and they're, now we're going to a new school year, is that first offense still, is it still in play?
We will reset.
Why do we do that?
A, I think it becomes a little bit of a logistical nightmare to keep these, these forms going on and on and on and on. Secondly, they're 14, 15, and 16. So I think there is a recognition that there's growth from year to year. Third, because it was a first, a first year for this, I, I think, I think we will see those numbers go down over time. We definitely saw it in the course of the year go down. And I think our first day last year, we collected, I want to say we collected 29 phones. We didn't have a day like that hardly at all again. And so, yeah, they're, they're kids, and we want a fresh start for them.
I would anticipate September being a tough month, just because they're going to be having to not have their cell phone in their hands.
Yeah, I do believe it's an addiction. We see that in the building. I mean, in some cases, it's hard, it's an addiction. That's, that's for sure. So September might be a little bit bumpy again, but we will, we will launch again, very much the way that we did before, with reminders all day long on that first day and just of a very clear removal. I heard from a decent amount of parents that the first week, probably at the high school this year, the kids were coming home and saying, oh my gosh, they're serious. And we saw the reaction to that, for sure.
Mike? Just following up with what Dale said, maybe considering, or consider as this next school year starts, yes, it'd be hard to track 414 people who had a first offense, especially if like two-thirds of them haven't graduated. But maybe you key in on the fourth and fifth offense ones where the numbers are lower, and if they didn't graduate and like, those, that's a lot easier to track that. And then you go, you don't get to start over. You're, you're suspended now.
Yeah, we can definitely take a look at that. I think, and I, I need to look, and I could get back to you on that. I am pretty sure that the most of the kids that we saw in the fourth and fifth were seniors.
Yeah. Regardless, I guess my point is it's easier to track the really, like.
Absolutely.
The committed, I'm going to shove it in your face and take in my phone people, you know?
We can also be proactive and have meetings with them early on, you know, fresh start, but we are aware that this was a struggle for you, and we want to touch base with everybody and let you know this isn't going to change again this year. But I do think over time, we will see these numbers drop.
After next year, looking at the numbers, if they're still kind of high on the like third, fourth, fifth offense, could we consider moving that parent meeting up to the third or fourth offense?
Sure. I think we've always seen this as we're going to put it in place the first year and watch what happens with it and make adjustments as we go. So absolutely. Yep.
Carolyn? And I piggybacking off what Mike said, if the kids know at third and fourth and fifth, their numbers aren't going to get erased and they're starting there the next year, maybe that would help scare them after that first offense, like, well, I already had one. That doesn't go away when I go to sophomore year or junior year or senior year. It's kind of like your points in your driver's license follow you until, like, I guess after, I don't know, when they fall off. Three years? There, there you go. Four years.
Yeah, we'll definitely look at it as, as time goes and they adjust to this and we move forward.
Does the middle school follow the exact same?
They do.
Do we have data from the middle school as well, or can Luke come and?
I could ask Luke for that data.
Go ahead.
With the substitutes that are coming through the school, are they aware of the policy and enforcing it? Because I have heard, and there's been classrooms where there's a sub in the classroom, they have whatever they do for the day, and then the sub said, now you guys can go on your phones if you want. I'm like, why would they do that? For my seventh grader. So, I don't know.
I can speak for the high school on that. We actually changed some things in our template that we provide for our subs, emphasizing the phone policy a little bit more, because we also were hearing that. So it was a matter of talking to subs. I mean, we would follow up with subs and remind them of that. And then we did, we did add to the template, big, bold. And then Laura, who greets all of our subs in the morning, will do more reminders with them and did actually at the end of the year, just because we were hearing that at the high school too.
And I can ask Luke at the middle school. I'm not sure what their communication looks like.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thanks.
I would say like as somebody who walks through the hallways of the high school pretty frequently, the kids are not on their phones. Like sometimes I walk. This whole pack of kids are going to be on their phones, but they're not.
I don't see any of them.
That's awesome.
I agree.
Yay.
All right. Then looking at our in-school, some, look at our suspension trends. So just looking at the difference between our in-school suspensions and our out-of-school suspensions. So keep in mind, an in-school suspension would be, a student would probably likely report to the office, they would do their work there, they would have lunch there, spend the majority of their day there. So what you're going to notice between the in-school and out-of-school suspension trends between the middle school and the high school is they actually kind of flip-flopped. So the middle school went from 69 in-school suspensions to 45 this year, while their out-of-school suspensions increased from 36 to 58. And I want to comment just a little bit on that, because I do think what that mirrors is some alignment between the middle school and the high school with how we are implementing our student code of conduct. And so I think that's actually, even though the numbers aren't great, I think it does speak to the alignment of our system. And the high school went through that last year. And so this year, our in-school suspension trend for the high school was higher, and Stephanie can speak to that, and their out-of-school was lower. And that has been a conversation that we have had a number of times with, just in collaboration with our student services and the high school administration, about the benefit of keeping our kids in school versus, there are always going to be times when a student should absolutely be suspended outside of school. It's a certain, a specific violation, but when possible, looking at how we can keep our kids in school so they're not missing so much instruction. And I think Stephanie can speak a little bit to that.
Yeah, we did, as much as we could support it with staffing this year, we prefer in, in some cases, again, like Christine said, there are some cases where a student needs to leave the building for a day or two or three because of what happened. But we did play around a lot more this year with putting a student in in-school suspension when we could support it staffing-wise. It was a popular decision with parents and a very unpopular decision with students. The nice part about that is that we feel like the continuation of education in those cases could be much stronger. We could have teachers touching base if need be. We could go get materials if need be. And so that continuation of services was a positive, we felt, in the building.
They don't get to go home and play video games.
We would literally have parents say that, like, I'm going to be at work. I know he's going to be on video games for the whole day. And so we did, we did try to use it in certain cases when we felt like we could staff it for the day.
What does an average day for an in-school suspension look like for a student?
We don't let them watch Netflix. We don't let them be on, on computers randomly. We are getting them work. We are touching base with them. We're having discussions with them about why they landed in in-school. Bathroom breaks, take them to lunch if they get lunch. Somebody walks with them, usually a hallway monitor or an AP walks with them and grabs lunch for the day, but then they return and eat lunch in there. It's, it's a long day, I would say, but it just allows us to continue. It's, it's a long day, I would say, but it just allows us to continue teaching the behavior, I feel like, in a different way, and like I said, benefit is the continuation of services.
And I would say that looks pretty similar at the elementary level. So they're doing their work in the office. They eat their lunch in the office. They don't have recess. But there's also an opportunity, and I would say at the high school as well, for a student services staff member to follow up and still meet with a student if they need to, or a teacher to stop down and touch base with them.
Why no recess for the, for the...
Well, if the student is in because of an altercation at recess or something happened, likely they're going to lose their recess privileges during an in-school suspension. That doesn't mean they won't have another opportunity during the day to be active. It might be taking laps around the school. It could be going out with a para, you know, outside for a while, but it's not going to be at the same level of a student.
Burpees competition?
Or what?
Can we do like a burpees competition? If it's the most burpees in an in-school suspension?
We could try that.
I apologize if it's in the notes somewhere when I reviewed this presentation, but for instance, forty-five from the year 2024 for Parkview, is that forty-five total days or forty-five different students?
Forty-five total incidents. So that, so...
Could be the same student, but a whole different incident.
Correct.
How many repeat offenders do we have?
I knew you were going to ask that, and I don't know that number off the top of my head. I'd have to look into that. At the elementary level, we saw a decrease in both in-school and out-of-school suspensions, which is a nice downward trend to see. I think a lot of that has been given some of the PBIS work around expectations for students during the school day. So I'll be curious to continue to watch those two trends for in-school and out-of-school as we move into this school year. And then if you go into the next piece, it looks at our top suspension categories, so by elementary, middle, and high school, and I do have that three-year trend on there. I would say there was no surprises in this at all for me. It seemed to be similar to what we'd had in the past with our physical altercations, again, at the elementary. That can be all over the place, right? It can be a kindergartner's not getting along and one pushes another, or it could be something more significant when you're talking about a, more of a hands-on incident, especially as students get older.
Did the alcohol just disappear from the other years?
Oddly, yes. I mean, it doesn't mean that it didn't happen, but we didn't have five. Typically, typically, our experience has been that when there's an alcohol-related event, somebody, there might be somebody who brings it, and then several students become involved. Okay, so then we're talking about our discipline, then we'll take a step into our pre-expulsion meetings. So I have the meetings on here from the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. I'm just going to review those. We had forty-four parent meetings during that time. Twenty-nine of those meetings were related to substance use, and then sixteen of those meetings were related to other behaviors. So those could have been a threat. It could have been a refusal to follow school rules. And then looking at this last year, we had forty-one parent meetings that were considered to be pre-expulsions, pretty consistent in twenty-five of them versus twenty-nine being related to substance use. That could have been vapes, a vape with THC or alcohol, different substance. And then sixteen of those meetings were related to other behaviors. So again, that health and safety or a refusal to follow a school rule. And then it should be noted that in these meetings, there, both years have been students than that are not returning to Maguano High School for a variety of reasons. And so just as a side note to that, all of those meetings are rooted in our board policy and code of conduct, and so those are always referenced in our meetings. And typically, I think that those meetings are super helpful for our parents and our high school administration or middle school or elementary administration to come together and try to get everybody on the same page, so. And they're always held at the district office, which I also think gives it just a little bit of a different feel. All right, and then the last piece of data I'm bringing is just our bullying incidents and investigations for this last school year. So when we're looking at bullying as defined by our policy, our board policy, fifty-five seventeen, there are some questions that we focus on when we're doing an investigation. So was the incident deliberate or intentional use of words or actions? Was the intention to cause fear, intimidation, or harm? Was there an imbalance of power? And was the behavior repeated? And then when we're actually digging into our data on bullying, we had, we have something called confirmed or unconfirmed. And unconfirmed would mean that, so if you start to look into the bullying investigations on the bottom of the chart, we had thirty-seven confirmed bullying investigations, and we had nineteen that were reported but were unconfirmed, which means that we didn't have any evidence to substantiate that it happened. So we might have brought in other kids, weren't able to get any additional evidence. There was no photos, no video footage, no nothing to, you know, to collaborate and say that the incident did in fact happen. Doesn't mean that there was no follow-through. It just means that it wasn't, it wasn't confirmed. Of those investigations, there were two official investigations. So official investigations are done by our compliance review officer, so that would be Rachel or Ben. They had two official ones that they completed this year. Did you do both of those? And then breaking down the incidents and investigations, those are done by type for elementary, middle, and high school. So our next steps are to continue to calibrate a norm around our behavior incidents and investigations. So when we come together at admin council, we will continue to do that, but on a much more, we're going to do that quarterly this year, so that will continue just to work on that alignment, continuing to build our behavior, our multi-level systems of support. So again, that's around that behavior. You're going to hear more about that this school year. And also, Joe mentioned that we'll have a behavioral committee, so I've asked all of our principals to provide me with two to four names of parents that I can bring in as part of the committee, and then we'll also have some administration present also and just do some learning together. Talking about that consistent policy implementation and practices. I mentioned the behavioral committee, and then being responsive. So what do we need to do to continue to address mental health needs in our, with our students? So we're going to continue to look at that data, work with our student services staff, and then also just explore other partnerships, like I mentioned before. The professional development opportunities, we continue to do the youth mental health first aid training. We have roughly a hundred and fifty people now trained in that. That's been really great. We've opened it to our private and parochial schools for the August training. We continue to do the non-violent crisis intervention training. This year, we will do, so the training is broken into a de-escalation and a hands-on part. The de-escalation will be done for all teachers this year. And so I think that that will be a nice commitment for all staff to really be talking about how to get in, how to diffuse a situation and how to get out of a power struggle. And then we spent a lot of time this summer, giving you that in the board updates, just around collaborating as building teams with the behavioral solutions. And then wrapping that again all together, Angela and I and Student Learning, Student Services are always talking about how we can wrap that back around with our professional learning communities, and what are we doing if our students aren't learning? And that also is addressing that behavioral component. So that was a lot. Do you guys have any extra questions?
Craig?
Christine, it seems like in the past, we've had expulsion every, once a quarter, maybe. Maybe going back three, four, or five years, Stephanie, but we haven't seen one for quite a while. Is that because it's getting handled internally now?
I think there are other ways that we can sometimes address what could be an expulsion. So we can do agreements, an abeyance agreement, where we would ask that a student, not ask, the agreement would be that a student can't return to campus, and they could, like, we won't move to expulsion, but you also can't enroll in another neighboring school district. That's a brick and mortar school. So if we have a student and they say, well, I'm just going to go enroll then in Kettle Marine, that, it's called an abeyance, that agreement would prevent them from doing that. And we try to keep that, it's called like a good neighbor clause, to try to protect each of us, right? Like, if Mesquite has kids that they're sending to us or vice versa, like, to protect each other. And it's been, that has worked for us. So it, ultimately, you have the same outcome, the student's not returning to our campus.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
We're not to find, finance and facility topics. Thanks, Stephanie. None? All right. Action items, hires, retirements, and resignations.
All right. Busy, I think this microphone is broken. We've been busy this past month. So we have the following people who were offered a contract. Kyle Dolan, who is going to be an English teacher at Maguano High School. Lisa Jones, who is a part-time teacher, being offered the four-K position at Vernon Community Child Development Center. Anita Lempberger, who is being offered a part-time English language learner position and then part-time reading specialist position, and that's a district-wide. Julie Rice, who is being offered a science position fifty percent and then the building subposition fifty percent at Maguano High School. Katie Schissel, who is being offered one of our library technology specialist positions at Big Bend Elementary School, and she'll split that with Clarendon Elementary School. Kaylee Sinnett is being offered the third grade position at Clarendon Elementary School. And then Jordan Thays is being offered a special education teaching position at Big Bend Elementary School. We have not had any changes in contracts, but we did have a resignation of Jennifer Sarkowski, a business and marketing teacher. I make a motion that we approve the hires and resignations.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. We're not to academic standards for twenty-five, twenty-six.
Okay. At the June board meeting, I presented the proposed academic standards for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Just as a reminder, state law requires that the public school districts formally adopt those academic standards. The list of standards was provided in the attachment, so I'm asking that the board take action to approve the standards for next school year.
Looking for a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the standards for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve the academic standards for twenty-five, twenty-six. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Twenty-four, twenty-five, year-end transfer to Fund Forty-Six.
All right, so as we just have our one meeting in July, there's a couple of action items here that you're hearing for the first time. This is the first one here. The first piece I just want to quickly hit on, there's no action that's needed. But when we run our payroll cycle, every two weeks, for example, a family plan cost twenty-two thousand six hundred dollars over the course of this past school year. Eighty-eight percent of that twenty-two thousand six hundred dollars will be funded by the district. The other twelve percent will be funded by the employee. All of that money goes into a pot of money that is our medical liability account, and we use those funds then to pay medical claims throughout the year. When we take a look at this June thirty snapshot that I'm hovering over here, through the payroll deposits, through the payroll cycle, I should say, where the employer and the employee are setting funds aside, we have just over a million dollars set aside as of June thirty, twenty twenty-five. We have this incurred but not reported piece that we're mandated to calculate each year. We, we work with an actuary to figure that out to say, okay, as of June thirtieth, how many services have been incurred that we simply aren't aware of? If a major surgery takes place on June twentieth, we, the district, don't know that, but because the surgery or the medical service was incurred, we have to take a best guess to say, okay, over the next six months as bills roll in for all services on or before June thirty, we have to set money aside. So that's just simply referred to as incurred but not reported. Last year, we had a value of nine hundred and eighty-one thousand. Our medical liability account had just over two million dollars as of June thirty. Our actuaries gave us three values, and the third value was a conservative set aside of one point seven million dollars. If I just scroll down and I choose that value right there, that sets aside two point seven million dollars in our medical liability account, which essentially puts us in a position to say, if we have a lung transplant, if we have some major, major things that can happen, we're positioned to deal with a bad year. And we're at the end of year two, we're already positioned to deal with that. So that's just for your information. Before we made this journal entry right here, we had about three million dollars, just over three million dollars of revenues exceeding expenditures. So we had the funds to do that, and that's why I said, let's, this is a good idea. Let's make this happen. The Fund Forty-Six transfer that I want to talk to you about, I really have three scenarios here, so... The, what we have is that we transfer nothing to Fund Forty-Six. Again, just as a reminder, if we have money left in Fund Ten, we can move it to Fund Forty-Six, and then the money is sitting there accruing interest, and it's set aside to pay for our major projects, our next wave of those that will come up next summer. We have two point three seven million dollars of surplus funds available in Fund Ten from the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. If we transfer none of that, we'll basically keep two point three seven million in Fund Ten's fund balance, and our state aid will be twenty-six point six million. If we transfer a two point three seven million, all right, that means that we have a perfect break-even year in Fund Ten, so we're not adding any fund balance to Fund Ten. We're taking every extra dollar, moving it. Then we would have twenty-seven point seven million, so you can see the state aid actually increases. So at a minimum, let's do this. What I'm recommending is that we actually transfer three point five million, which would show a budget deficit, a negative in our Fund Ten outcome. It's not really a negative to me because you're just moving one, you're conservatively moving money aside from this pot to that pot. Our Fund Ten fund balance is really strong, so it can certainly afford if we moved an extra million. The sacrifice in aid is just simply fifty thousand dollars. So if you look at twenty-seven point seven two million, now to twenty-seven point six seven million, we're setting a full million dollars aside and only sacrificing fifty thousand dollars in aid to do that, which is an incredible, that's a trade-off worth taking, in my opinion. When, if you don't make the transfer, you can see there's basically twenty-six point six million, but if you do make either one of these two transfers, you're increasing aid. It's a no-brainer. Anytime you can increase aid, you can decrease the tax levy. So I recommend that we transfer the three point five million dollars, and we really position ourselves well. Again, much like the medical liability count, we continue to proactively set funds aside for verkata, for you name it. So that's my recommendation. So I'm looking for you guys, is there a discussion you want? This is something, obviously, we don't know until the...
I'd like to make a motion that we accept three point five transfer from Fund Ten to Fund Forty-Six.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Carolyn?
Why is the, and maybe you said this, I just missed it. Why is there less state aid with the three point five million versus the two point seven? I didn't catch that part.
No, that's, that's all good, and we're going to kind of really get into that tomorrow a little bit. So when you think about that, there's three tiers of state aid. The first thousand dollars per a kid is the primary tier, between one thousand... Kind of always, I gotta use my hands here, squat down so I can keep the mic by my mouth. If, if we're, if we get positive aid up until this value, we keep spending up until this value, and we're generating more aid as we spend, but then when we spend beyond that value, that's in the tertiary tier, and we're negatively aided at the tertiary level. So the penalty for, if we're trying to spend to this level to lower the tax levy essentially, is we spend up to that level by making a conservative transfer. The penalty for underspending is severe, because we get like fifty percent of all this spending back, so you don't want to underspend this. It's, I think, wise to slightly overspend it just to make sure that you took advantage of every single dollar of positive aid you could get, even if that means you're slightly going a little negative. The, the penalty for underspending is big. The penalty for overspending isn't nearly as big. Does that make sense?
Coach?
And just following up with that, so if we transfer to the medical fund and we don't use it all, do we have to pay back some of that state aid?
Oh, so the reason that I suggest that I think it's a good idea to overspend is that an auditor's job, I just scroll back to what we were talking about earlier here. So if they say, okay, you have one point, just over a million dollars in cash reserves, and then you have an incurred but not reported value of one point seven, they might say, hey, that's too much money you set aside. and then you have an incurred but not reported value of 1.7, they might say, hey, that's too much money you set aside. When we set that money aside, we get aid on it. So it's almost in the sense of like, when we look at our three tiers of aid, the secondary tier, which is where most of our aid comes from, for every dollar we spend, we get 50 cents back. And that's lessening the tax levy onto the community. So again, you try to like, find, I would never ever say, hey, let's go find, let's go buy a whole bunch of staplers, and let's go buy a whole bunch of stuff that we may never really need. But when you set money aside here in the medical liability account, that's recognized as an expense the moment you move it there. When you move the money from 10 to 46, that money is expensed the moment you move it there. So those are really, I think, that's what I would do if I was a school board member in any community. Say, we're going to strategically set this money aside for when these liabilities come to be the medical or capital projects. Did I answer your question?
Yes, but just quick follow-on, and I'm all for what you're saying right now. But if we don't spend all that medical expense money, can it be put into the medical expenses for the next year?
Yeah, oh yeah, 100%.
So we're not like, losing it?
No, no, God, no. I would never put us in a spot like that.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of approving the $3.5 million transfer, say aye.
Aye.
All those that disagree, say no. Motion carries. Moving on to the 25-26 preliminary tax levy and state aid.
Okay, so just going to cut to the chase here. The news here isn't awesome. It's just not. The state budget came out, the state biennial budget was agreed upon in late June. So I didn't have this information to share with you guys until the next time I saw you, which is tonight. There's two major details in the state budget as it affects us. Each school district will get 325 additional dollars per student in their revenue limit formula. But there is no new general aid coming into the school districts. Okay, the pot of money that the biennial budget defines is not changing. So if you look at where I'm hovering right here, this column is the 24, and I'm just, let me make that a little bit bigger. This is the 24-25 base year, as they call it. So here you could see this, as I go left or right, the general school aids. This general aid or equalization aid, this is, it's all the same thing, it's just general school aid. There was $5.581 billion set aside for that in the 24-25 school year. The governor asked for an increase in year one and in year two, but the joint finance committee said, no, we're leaving it flat. That detail right there says that the state government is not going to put more money into the general school aid pot, which is ultimately its tax levy relief. So they haven't funded this, this particular budget for whatever the reason is. Okay? Just as a side note here, you can see under categorical aids, there was $1.519 billion. And the governor made his request here, and the state legislature said, yeah, we'll bump these numbers up. That categorical aid movement there is really an investment in special education reimbursements. So for every dollar we spend on special education this year, we get about 30 cents back next year. Those special ed categorical aid numbers are going to go up to like 42% next year. Okay? That's spendable money for the school district to balance their budget with. But the investment in general school aids is ultimately becoming property tax relief. Okay? So when we go down to the next, this is kind of what our levy's going to look like here, and I just got to decrease it a little bit for a second. Okay, so when we look at 24-25, we have in our three-year average, 4,623 students multiplied by our 11,325. That's 52 million and change. We have these one-time adjustments that come into it, and it all adds up to $54.8 million. Okay? That's essentially, that's our budget. That's 85% of our whole district budget right there. When we look ahead to the current school year, this 11,325 is becoming 11,650. We have a lesser number of kids, but ultimately here we have $52.8 million. So our budget authority, that extra $325 per a kid, is making a bigger budget for us. Okay? That's $488,000 additional dollars. When we look at these adjustments here, as we add these up, and I want to highlight the private school vouchers here is going to project to go, was 1.3 million last year to 1.6 million. We ultimately, this is not spendable money, private school vouchers and special need vouchers. We issue a levy, we don't see the money. It's not like we collect it and we can make a decision as to what should we spend on. This money is spoken for from the get-go. So that's not spendable tax revenue there. This, of the basic formula here, the budget's going up $488,000. These adjustments compared to last year are going up $700,000. So ultimately, this budget authority here from last year to this year is going up $1.19 million. Okay? If I scroll down further then, so this was last year's budget authority, here's this year's budget authority. We say, okay, of those two amounts, how much will the state pay for? How much will state aid kick in? Last year, we got $28.9 million. So if we have $54.8 million as our budget authority, the state kicks in $28.9. The remainder becomes our operating tax levy of $25.89 million. This year, as this number increases, because the state aid not going up, we are projecting a million, almost a million-dollar decrease in state aid. Okay? Even if we went back, you know, that Fund 46 transfer, if you add $50,000 of aid, that doesn't really move the needle. That makes, what we just did, it makes perfect sense, and I think it's absolutely the best thing we could do. But when state aid drops by a million dollars, that's, we can't control that. That's a state budget piece that's out of our control. So two things are going on here. One is the budget is going up. Second thing is state funding is walking backwards. So our, so we have, basically, there's three tax levies, but only two are worth really talking about in material terms. Our operating tax levy and our referendum tax levy. Our referendum tax levy is set to go up next year, not this year. So let me just scroll in and make this a little bit bigger. What's in yellow from year to year is the operating levy. That's our budget. How much does the state account for? The taxpayers get the remainder. You can see that that's going up. The referendum levy is, for all intents and purposes, fairly level and even. And then our school resource officer levy there is, again, that's level. So altogether, the tax levy is set to go up $2.3 million, which is a 7.39%, and none of that has to do with the referendum levy. This is purely an operating levy issue. It's really, again, the two factors are, our budget's getting bigger, and our state government is not taking it, is taking less responsibility for it and saying, pay it yourself. One thing I want to highlight here is that this is not unique to us. If we take a look at Waukesha County, I gave an article from, the DPI comes out with an estimate each year on July 1st. They're statutorily obligated to give us this. Arrowhead's losing 17% of their state aid. You see some wild swings. Elm Brook and Menominee Falls are going up considerably. Kettle Moraine's losing 17%. We're losing 3%. Meskego's about the same. Okonwak's losing a lot. Waukesha's losing a ton. There's some serious, serious swings that are going on. And, you know, given the composition of the state legislature, I would have bet money that they would have put money into the state aid pot because it brings property taxes down. That did not happen. That did not happen. So two things are true at once. One is that with the money we have, we're very fiscally responsible. We're in a great spot. We set money aside. We're doing great. On the flip side of that is, is that the source of our funding is getting pushed onto our taxpayers and not from the state. Does that make sense? I wish I had way better news to share, like this isn't exactly what I wanted to be talking about, but it is the reality that we need to prepare for. Just going back in time now, if I go back up to this projected tax levy here, this is my absolute best guess. And in years past, I can get pretty close to what reality becomes. But we won't know what our state aid is until October 15th. We won't know what our third Friday is until, you know, September. So there's still a few more dominoes that have to take place. But by and large, we know that there's going to be an increase that's taking place. Okay?
I know you don't know until the third Friday in September what the people count's going to be. But is using our enrollment currently, like what we have or what we know we have, any?
That's, I'm actually, based on what I ran, our numbers last week, Friday, before I wrote this, and kind of I waited to the last minute to say, gather all the data. Everything is being reflected of what we, what kids are enrolled for school next year as of Friday is all reflected in here. Does that make, am I answering your question there? Yep, so it's as current as I could possibly make it.
Great. So why is Elm Brook getting 23% more than Waukesha? Or why is, why? Menominee Falls, whatever. I mean, what, it's huge disparity.
Huge disparity.
Sitting here looking at it.
I can bring you back some information, Craig. I haven't crawled into Elm Brook or Menominee Falls. But I got a little bit of information on the falls. And this, I think I'm right about this. But when you spend significantly into negative tertiary aid, you're pushing, you know, you're giving aid back. If you're constantly, you know, this is the secondary tier, and it's positive, positive, positive. Then you start to spend beyond that, now you're giving aid back. If you say, let's stop spending that much, let's pull back on it, you're retaining more aid. So if they're changing their practices to make, to get themselves out of negative tertiary spending and reducing that exposure, they're going to pick up more aid for doing that. Again, if you go, as I've heard this said before, for school board people, when they're talking school finance, the first thing you need to know is, are you working for a positively aided school district or a negatively aided school district? The, whether you're positive or negatively aided depends on if your property values in your district on average per student, so we have about a million dollars of property value per a kid, that's in excess of the state average. If the state average is about $900,000 of property value per a kid, that means there's $900,000 in homes for every one kid that attends your school. We have more property value than that $900,000. So we're negatively aided at the tertiary level. School districts that are positively aided at the tertiary level, every dollar they spend, they get more aid. There's almost an incentive to spend more. So districts like MPS that are positively aided are going to get bigger shares.
Tom, does this, is this at all affected by some of the large referendums that were passed last year, operational across the state?
It can be, yeah. If a large school district is positively aided at the tertiary level, which means, hey, we got more money coming, we're going to spend that money, that means now you're going to get more aid, too.
So this was a situation, we were involved, Tom and I did an interview last year just about the Milwaukee, the MPS large referendum that passed. And this is one of the concerns that came out of that referendum for districts across the state.
So if we're responsible in our spending, we're semi-being punished by the state for being responsible in our spending? Is that what I'm understanding?
I would say that they didn't invest money into the state aid formula. So the state aid, K-12 spending, K-12 public instruction is about 40% of the entire state budget. It's easily bigger, twice as large as the next biggest line item, which I think is like Badger Care, medical spending for state residents. So it's a huge piece of the state budget, and it went undressed. It went undressed, and we're not going to be the, I think, two-thirds, if I, bear with me here for a quick second here. Lost my place here. But in this packet I gave you here, I gave you a couple more things. But the last thing that I gave you here is just the information from the Waukesha Freeman had wrote about this. Two-thirds of school districts are in our boat. So the vast majority of school districts are in our boat.
Not that I want to do this, but what would a district need to do to get positively aided at the tertiary level? Not saying we should do it. I'm just curious.
Your house values would have to go below the state average.
Okay.
That's.
And we don't want that.
No, I understand. I'm just, I'm trying to understand how one is positive and one is negative and what that means for us.
So here's what I would suggest we do. Let's adopt this tax levy for the time being with the simple intent of saying, let's just take the community temperature. Let's tell the story of where it's at right now and get feedback. Okay? We can try to talk strategies in August and September before we make the final tax levy certification come October.
Tom, I think we need to explain to the taxpayers that this isn't about the referendum. Because they're all going to say, well, it's about the damn referendum, but it's not.
You are 100% correct, Craig. Okay, there's one thing I want to just open up here while we're wrapping up this topic. And I think we're getting to, close to the end, but I think it's important that we talk about. So we have two tax levies, just bear with me as this opens up here. We have two tax levies, again, that are materially large. It's the operating tax levy and the referendum tax levy. Bear with me. Okay. Here we go, Crosby, little. All right, so these are our levies right down here, all right? And you can see from year to year how they look. All right, and here's where we currently think we're going to be, and I'll make this a little bit bigger here for us. So this operating levy from last year to this year, if we just take a look at this here, is going to go up $2.3 million, all right? Our referendum levy just slightly changes. The community service levy is flat. So you can see that we have this $6.3 million referendum levy. Next year, it's going to go up to about $7.2 million and stay put into the foreseeable future. Okay? This one-time jump from 25-26 into 26-27, as we go from about $6.3 million to $7.2, that's the jump we communicated to the community, said, if you vote for this, that's, this is what's going to occur. It's what happens here, is what happens to the operating levy. Because you're right, Craig, at the end of the day, a taxpayer is going to say, hey, my taxes went up 7%. You said this wasn't going to happen until next year. What happened? It's not the referendum levy that pushed it. It's the operating levy that pushed it. And it's out of our control because we don't control the state budget. No one's going to like that answer. And I don't, I get it. I get it. I'll take some angry phone calls. I get it. But I just at least hope people can understand the why behind it.
Mike?
You're a much smarter man than I am, but I did read something about potentially.
Not better-looking though, Mike.
I think it was from the Wisconsin Institute for Law and Liberty talking about a potential first-time-ever federal school choice voucher that may get passed. I don't know if you've heard of that, but it might become another one of your wild cards that could help us or not. I don't know how that would work.
I don't think that helps us. I think that one of the things that you'll hear from me tomorrow is, you know, when we go through our board workshop, is I'll talk about our resident enrollment, open enroll-ins and open enroll-outs. We're in an environment of competition, educationally speaking, with private schools, voucher schools, neighboring public schools. And I think competition is good. If you have a basic, you know, intersection, there's one restaurant on the corner, it can do good business. But if a second restaurant moves in there, not necessarily a bad thing. Because now everybody knows where to go, and they can, they know where to find good food. And this is just my analogy. If a third one comes, that can still, competition can still be good. People are starting to recognize, hey, this is a great place to go. You bring in a fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth restaurant, you don't have enough traffic to feed all those restaurants, and they're going to start to cannibalize each other. So I think there's a tipping point of education. Competition is good in education. When it gets so saturated that none of us have enough kids to craft a meaningful budget, then it becomes too much.
I guess what I'm getting at is, they mentioned in the article I read, they weren't sure how it would roll out, but the federal government would start giving families vouchers for school choice. And if that happened, maybe that would mean we don't pay as much as a local community for that. Because what you put up there, like, we're still paying a certain amount of money for people to go to their own choice schools, correct?
Yeah, I guess that we'll have to sit back and wait and see. It seems that the message I've heard from the federal government is that education is a state's issue, and states should run their education as they see fit. I don't think they're going to get involved. But I could be wrong, and we'll sit back, wait and see. It's probably an issue that's probably better discussed a different day.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we're looking for a motion.
Okay, we're looking for a motion on this on the 25, 26 preliminary.
Uh, again, the only thing that we would do with this is publish this for, um, in our annual meeting booklet and roll it out at the budget hearing to see how people feel about it. And I know they won't feel strongly about it, but that's the intent of what we're approving right now.
All right. So we need a motion. I I say let's make the motion that we move forward with publishing this for, I don't know.
The preliminary 25, 26 tax levy.
There we go. For the 25, 26 tax levy.
Second.
We have a motion a second. Any more questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Motion carries. Moving on to the superintendent's report.
All right. Several thank yous. Just our IT and Buildings and Grounds departments doing a phenomenal job this summer, getting things ready to go for the 25, 26 school year. Did an outstanding job getting things ready for summer school. And now summer school is done. They're tearing that apart and they're going to get the buildings cleaned through the remainder of the summer. I also want to just thank the district office staff. We've got a tremendous team that works here. Um, our our all of our departments, the the from the hiring to getting benefits coordinated, um, to responding to the public, to keeping a sharp eye out as to who shows up on our property. Um, they have done just an outstanding job. And I want to thank thank the team that we have here at the district office.
Thank you. I just want to say I'm glad administrators, a few that I've talked to at least, taking some time off and getting a mental break. So kudos to you guys. Um, up next, we have executive session. According to Wisconsin statute 19.85, we'll be going to executive session for the 25, 26 bus transportation rates, employee compensation, and the superintendent's annual evaluation. Bye. Thank you for coming. So looking for a motion to close the open session and go into closed session.
Make I make a motion to c- close the open session and go into closed session.
We're ready for you. All right, mic's on, mic's on. We are back into open session at ten thirty five P. M. And we do have an agreement on our bus contract.
I think motion that we do a seven point two percent increase for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year. And that starting in twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven, we implement a rate increase equal to C P I with a minimum of two point five percent and a maximum of six percent.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say no. Motion carries. Looking for a motion to close.
Motion to adjourn.
Beckett.
Motion and second. Roll call, vote please.
Mike.
Yes.
Jake.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Dale.
Yes.
Carolyn.
Yes.
Craig.
Here.
Crosby, yes.